All right, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled May 9th, 2022 school meeting session. Time is now 6:01 and we will call this meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio or videotaped, so please let us know. There's nobody here in attendance. I don't see anybody in the audience at this time virtually, so we will stand the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll start with a roll call. Kathy, do you want to start this tonight?
Kathy, hello. Sarah?
Gregory Thompson.
Angela Rochelle.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Sarah Trilio.
Bill Fonseca.
Elizabeth Marcin Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent of Business.
We have some minutes for approval.
Move to approve the April 25th, 2022 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by both?
Second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion carries five to zero.
No, I abstain.
Oh, abstain, sorry. Four, zero, one abstention. Thank you, and now, that's right, you won't hear that. Right. And next step of minutes.
Move to approve the April 25th, 2022 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Greg. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays. And one abstention. So that motion carries four, zero, one abstention. All right, committee and subcommittee communication. Beth, you want to start?
Actually, I went to the Spartan invitation on Friday, which was about a lot of kids. I think almost 700 kids were at it, kind of doing their thing, which was really nice to see them just being kids and doing everything. So it went very well. It's basically a track meet for a lot of districts that I don't think we traditionally necessarily play against. And they all come and, like I said, I think it was 20 different schools.
We had a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was really nice. It was a nice night. Just happy to see, yeah.
All right. Beth?
Yeah, first of all, we started secretary negotiations last week and we'll continue those this week and I'll keep everybody updated. Now, we've got some students of the month and improvements, and I'll just get through this from the collaborative. The April Students of the Month from LPVDC are Michael Burkhardt in Automotive Technology II, Nathaniel Bissonnet for Carpentry II, Nicholas Steele for Support and Networking I, and Nicholas Gower, Information Support and Networking II. Most improved vocational students. Automotive Technology had Michael Burkhardt from East Long Meadow, Trevor Siptiak, also from East Long Meadow, Building and Property Maintenance Management I, Matthew Meyer, Carpentry II, Cosmetology Jacob Rice, Kristen O'Brien, Landscaping and Horticulture II. And outstanding vocational students, Christopher Booton for Advanced Manufacturing and Technology III, also from this district, and congratulations to all those students.
Congratulations.
Do they give out the awards every month?
Yes.
So every month, there's like?
The students get certificates.
And the last ones, though, those are annual awards, the outstanding.
The last two that I read are for the year. The first one that I read is Outstanding Students of the Month. But they all get certificates and are all recognized. They have a banquet every year in the gym where they have it catered. So they're all recognized, they all get certificates, and it's noted at graduation as well.
That's great. Nice process.
Okay, that's all I've got.
I was able to experience some of the shifts that have happened as we've opened our doors up to families. So the other day, myself and our son, we were able to be the mystery readers in our daughter's first grade class. So we were actually the first in-person volunteers to come into the classroom since school had reopened. So it was a real treat to be able to read a couple of texts to the first grade room. And the building just looked great. It was the most time I had spent in the building since everything has happened. So it was a really nice experience and just watching the resiliency of the students and their participation and their laughter was warms the heart. So it was a nice, nice time, so excited to see that.
Did she know you were coming?
No, it's a mis- it's all you, they read clues.
There you go. That's even better.
Clues, but bless you. The last clue, she's, they said, give it away.
But that's okay, because it's always better if they don't know you're coming.
When you knock on the door and they appear, it was nice.
Good.
And Snell?
No, I don't have any.
Greg?
I have a bunch of sports happening at the stadium. Stadium's in full swing. Nice to see it being used. And the wall ball is fantastic. There are always lacrosse players on that wall every time I'm there, so that's good to see. Also, was at the awards night, it was last week, and we were there, and a great night. It's always good to see the athletic and scholastic awards that night.
I think over 80, 80 awards.
Seventy-plus participants, yeah.
The scholarships are really impressive, the way this community rallies to provide scholarships, whether, you know, it be Rotary or the Scholarship Foundation or so forth. It's different than I've seen in other communities, so that's really impressive. And they come. And then this year, everybody came to present, and so we got back to more of a regular routine with our awards night.
I was wondering in the future, just for a suggestion, if maybe we could do Coffee Hour before where the grantees actually meet their recipients? Because the recipients don't know going, what they're getting. And I actually made a connection between a student that I knew and someone presenting, just so they could meet ahead of time. And I don't think they get to do that, and so.
In some cases, you may be right with the majority, but I think in some cases, they have a reception later.
Yeah, later I get, but just to make that connection, because it's so boring, as you were saying, Gordon, that the community rallies to do all this, but, you know, save for that five-second interaction at the table to award the grant, there's not necessarily an opportunity to meet.
Yeah.
And Kate did get invited by Donna, won the Knights of Columbus Award, and they did invite her to come to a meeting.
Right.
But I think if we could facilitate that ahead of time, to just say, oh, you're the one I'm seeing, and congratulations, and then it could be that little exchange, because that's what, that's what the people that are granting the awards.
They do it for the kids. There's something in the cafeteria, have the kids up early. Kids don't even know necessarily what they're getting.
No, they don't.
They occasionally.
They see the brochure when they get there.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
But nice night, nicely set up and super smooth, so great night for the kids.
All right, so now's the time for visitors to address the committee. As I said before, there's no one here in attendance at central office. There are a few people on virtually. If anybody there is looking to address the committee, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you in. Okay, doesn't look like anybody is seeking to talk to us this evening. So we will move forward with an update on the MSBA feasibility study.
Okay, so I know that it seems like we're moving along slowly behind the scenes of the feasibility study, but hopefully that's going to pick up, and actually, I think it will pick up in terms of speed. The last announcement, I had let you know that through the MSBA process, we had identified a designer, Jones Witzit, in partnership with Sims Maney and McKee and Associates. We just last week were able to finalize a contract with them, so now they are fully on board, which is fantastic, because now they can get into the work. And literally, the day we signed the contract, they had already reached out and they said, would we be able to do an introductory meeting with high school leadership and department heads and so forth, which we did on Thursday afternoon? And so we are now into another MSBA timeline, because they have to have a certain portion of the feasibility study written by the end of August. So they're going to be looking between this month and June 16th to capture some of the high school staff and students in term, in smaller discussions and some, doing some visioning exercises with them. We started to outline some of that on Thursday, and we will do more Wednesday of this week, where we're actually not only going to discuss how we schedule all of those visioning sessions, both high school staff, and then eventually, towards the end, bring in larger amounts of the community to, towards, in the, with the idea, excuse me, of how does this building become a community building? So that would be partnering with our senior center and partnering with the rec department, both of whom have utilized this building at different times, and certainly rec utilizes our fields and so forth, so making sure that the vision is a community vision. So that's exciting. On Wednesday, we're going to be starting to outline that, and we're also going to be working with our IT department and hopefully start to set up a link to a dedicated webpage that will, we can put updates on where the feasibility study, how it's going, what we're doing, what are upcoming events, so that, you know, that can be live and it's a place that people can go at any time and see what's going on. So we're excited about that. More to come as we go through Wednesday, and we'll get some dates out to people in terms of community events and so forth as part of this feasibility study. So it's exciting.
Sounds good.
And we'll have a school building committee meeting soon, so we can update with all of that. But I'd like the designers, so I think Wednesday I'll try to nail that down. I want the designers to be there to be the entire school building committee.
It's terrific. I think keeping the conversation going, because it is a long process, is really vital to making sure the entirety of the community is aware of where we are and where we're headed. So thanks for doing that, Gordon.
Yeah, so when do we start the committee? We need a rally committee of such, right? Or how does that work?
I think Wednesday, we're going to start to get into that as we talk about the webpage and how, you're talking about sort of a community activist committee.
Yeah.
I think both design and owner, design firm and owner project manager, they have experience with that, and so they'll probably be able to give us an idea of when you start to generate that.
Great, thank you. And so next, we're going to give us an update on the budget and development process.
So this actually was, you know, very much a joint event, so certainly jump in. We had a very good meeting, you know, that the budget development has been going on, you know, in terms of the town and the schools, pretty much since January on. But we haven't had discussions where we've had full meetings up until April 28th, where we had a chance to sit down with the financial oversight committee and really go through where we are this year with our budget, where we're going with our budget request, the fact that we do know that we're trying to work probably over the course of at least two fiscal years to kind of build back from where we were a few years ago and also support newly identified needs. And I think it went really well. The questions that were asked were excellent, and I think that the answers we provided helped give the financial oversight committee a much better sense of what we're trying to achieve and where we're trying to go. And so that was well received. I think they will have some follow-up questions, but I know that they've had meetings since our meeting with them, and it seemed that they were very supportive of our budget, at least from the discussion that I saw. But I think there will be some follow-up questions that may be forwarded to us either this week or next week before they get ready to present their recommendation to the town council.
They only have two meetings left, so it's getting, we're close.
I would agree. I think, I think the ability to meet in person helps with that.
Definitely helped.
And I think having just different representatives there, from Pam to Heather, to be able to field questions in the moment, I think supported the conversation and and it being able to happen in a positive direction. So hopefully, hopefully that continues as we move forward with the process.
Collaboration was very good.
And I think one of the key points, and you just said it, as you had both Pam and Heather, as Director of Curriculum, some of their questions, if they're not looking at some of the things that we look at day to day, it's hard to realize that if you're putting in place a full curriculum initiative, when we gave the price, which I believe was close to $800,000, yeah, close to $800,000, people don't realize that, because you're outfitting pretty much K to eight, and then you're giving professional development around that, and all of that costs some money. And so it gave them much better insight as to what we're doing.
And they were also receptive to the fact that, and we've talked about it here, where the companies that are providing the professional development know all these districts have money and they're running up the cost. We explained all of that, and they were understanding of that, because they're dealing with out-of-control utility costs on the town side that have gone up over 20%.
The finance subcommittee doesn't understand that.
Well, no, they, they. Well.
No, they actually brought that up as one of the key points.
They brought it up. I mean, they talked about how DPW came to them and utility costs have gone up 23% since the beginning of the year. So they, they're aware of what's going on.
They're not aware of what's going on. That's just a point. I think the way we're funding this is a catastrophe, and we're all blind for it. And I don't know why nobody's throwing up red flags, because if we don't fund capital projects through the operating budget, we will look at several cuts next year, or we'll look at no capital investment. And nobody seems to care about that. I don't know why. So we're going to add 13 positions to this town. We're going to have to fund those positions into eternity, OPEB liability, retirement liability, because we have all this cashes here, but we're creating a cliff. It's there, it's real, and nobody seems to care. I don't know why.
I don't think, I think that's a slight misrepresentation. I don't extend individuals, no, but I'm saying I don't think individuals don't care about how funded.
They don't understand it. Mary's leaving, so she cares only so much, I think. And I'm not taking away from Mary, but she talks about a half a million dollars in capital investments next year at the meeting. We never do half a million. We do, 1.1 million is light, so it's not even a real number. So you have to add the 1.1 million back to next year's cap operating budget, and that's a 2% increase. So we're 2% plus the 2% that we're going to need for level services, it's just not going to fly. I'm just saying, there's no opportunity to fix this, and financial oversight is not elected. They don't answer to anyone. So this is going to happen. Town council's going to vote on what they see in front of them. It should be town council that has this discussion with an opportunity for people to come to town council and say, why are we going over this financial cliff? But we don't have that, because what's going to happen is financial oversight will just develop this piece of paper that they hand off to town council, who will just approve it, as they've done the last two years, without very little discussion. So I've sent my piece on this last meeting, and I know it made some news on the reminder, but it's true and it's there. I just wanted to put it out there again, because I don't have an opportunity to speak about this. The finance oversight committee is invitation-only, so they can do their whole job. I know they're on LCAP, but no one gets a say about it. They're not elected, they don't answer to the people, they're appointed by the town council president. How come they get to decide what our budget looks like? How come we have to go to them and convince them what's worthwhile? Why aren't they told by the council or by the town manager, here are the funds that are available, this is what the schools should get? I just think the process is broken, and we're going to move forward. So I said the last meeting, I'll say it now, I may speak at the town council, it will probably be too late, but I just want to everybody to know, this is real, that 1.1 million dollars is a cliff. It will be there next year.
Well, I appreciate the collaborative nature of our conversation, and I have.
We have to go there and kiss the ring of the financial oversight committee and hope that they give us all the money. And if they don't, it's merely on a whim, because they don't answer to anybody. So why do they get to fund us instead of DPW projects or DPW instead of police? Why do they get to decide? It should be the council.
If you're.
The council should have a full understanding of the budget, is that true? You agree with that?
Of course, they should have a full understanding of the budget.
And how do they have full understanding of the budget? Should they watch every finance oversight committee meeting?
How do you know they don't?
But if they're watching every finance oversight committee meeting, why aren't they just the finance oversight committee?
That's not the way it's structured.
This committee doesn't exist in the town. We made it up, and it's broken, because they don't answer to anybody. It's broken. We have to go kiss the ring of the finance oversight committee and hope that they give us seven million in points.
I disagree with you on that, because that is now speaking for how I spend my time and how I conduct myself when I'm representative of this body there. So I do not go and kiss rings of anybody.
That's what we do.
That's not what I did.
You know we do it.
No, I went and I spoke.
We should go to the council and convince them.
I'm speaking, so please stop interrupting me. I was speaking. I've given you your time to speak, please don't interrupt. But at the same time, if I know what I did when I went there, and I spoke in a collaborative fashion, and I spoke to the integrity of the structures that we have put in place, then that does not mean by any stretch of the imagination that I was kissing any ring figuratively. That's not what occurred. And if that's your interpretation, then that's your interpretation. But that was not how I conducted myself, nor was it how any of the representatives who joined me that day conducted themselves. So for you to speak in that way of us is an unfair representation of how those events came to be.
I think we, as a board, go to them respectfully, asking what we need. I think we always have. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I see that. I also understand where Greg's come from. Last year, with all due respect, we were slapped. And that was, I feel, we know, no, no, I do, which is fine. But the fact of the matter is, it wasn't so much, I feel, I want, I guess I want for the town to follow the charter and whatever the charter is. And I'm guessing we're not doing that. I think they're doing what they feel is the best, but I don't know if we're doing it to the charter. I'll be honest, I'm ignorant to it.
There's no finance oversight committee in the charter.
So anyways, that said, I do believe that we, as a board, always go to them respectfully. And, and that's the most important thing.
And I don't need any disrespect, and I know what it takes to get through this process, but the process is broken, and we're headed for this, and nobody sees it, nobody cares about it. Well, we care, I shouldn't overspeak, but it's real. And then next year, whose fault would the budget be? The councils? Well, they didn't create it. Us? No, we didn't create it. Mary's or the town manager? Nope, they didn't create it. An unelected board creates our budget every year. It just shouldn't be that way, because they don't answer, they answer the town council president. That's it. Why does that person get to have all of that authority to create a budget that's presented back to them? It just, it's, I'm sorry. Anyway.
Well, for our seat on the bus, we did what we needed to do, and we presented it in a collaborative and agreeable fashion that was the will of this entire committee, as the record will show in terms of how we voted. So that is where we stand in terms of that budget update.
And I think it was well received. I, that's all, whatever process is outlined, we have to participate in.
And I know that, Gordon, and we, and we do well, and you did well. I'm not taking away from that process, but why do we need to convince an unelected board what our budget should look like? It shouldn't be that way. Someone needs to answer the voters, they don't. And so why do they get to create the budget that just goes to the council to say, yep, we'll accept that, let's create our own budget, and we'll accept our own? It doesn't make sense. It should come from Mary, it should come from us, it should go right to the council, and they do their work. If they truly understand the budget, they watch all those finance oversight committee meetings, like I do. I'm not even on council. They should be that meeting, that should be their job. Their one job is the budget. They should do the whole job. Again, I'm repeating.
Okay, any further discussion? Pam, we're moving on to tuition for our potential full-day preschool program.
We are, so I'll start it. Gordon will probably chime in. That's how we usually do our presentations together. So the, was it at our last meeting, the meeting before, where we talked about preschool, right? That nice presentation, and we talked about two meetings, thank you, okay. Two meetings ago, and I believe that the school committee voted for the half-day increase from the current 1,800 to the 2,200, and we would like for you to now vote for the full day, because we are trying to get that in place. And I don't know if Mr. Smith wants to elaborate a bit on that.
So we're, based on the recommendations that we received from Interlocking, thank you, Mrs. Blair, we're trying to put in place, obviously, the five-day-a-week program and certainly the half-day structure. We're investigating, as we said, is there a way to have a full-day program with criteria for who would go into that full day? And we're getting close. Hopefully, we can pull it off. We don't know if that's going to be the case, but one of the things that we would need, should we be able to do it, is what would the tuition be for our peer role models going forward if we had a full-day session? So we're bringing back to you the recommendation that was from Interlocking Connections. We didn't spend a lot of time discussing it that night, because we were staying at that moment, committing to the half-day, and just investigating the full day.
But it is more than just twice that amount, just because it is a longer full day, just to, it's not just.
Full day is longer than either session, and there are more services provided.
Are you guys going to work, I'm just, when I'm looking at the price and anything like that? Is, are you going to have students bring the lunch? Are you going to ask, is it like, are they going to go to the cafeteria? I mean, to me, as I know, as you're planning as a parent, you're like, okay, when I sign up, are they getting their lunch? Are they going to bring their lunch? Are they going to bring them?
They can access the cafeteria similar to, yeah.
Mind if I just, because I've reached out to Lori Paul, our food service director, and Renee Lodi, the principal, to kind of start this topic, because I thought the same thing. What are the rules? Are the rules different? They are a little bit different for preschoolers. The servings are a little bit different. Mrs. Lodi was, is planning to have the pre-K in the classrooms. They would not go to the cafeterias. That actually makes it better, and Lori was very, I think, relieved to hear that, because.
Mrs. Lodi's scolding me. She just texted me that they can't eat in the cafeteria.
We got it, Mrs. Lodi. I heard you. And Gordon wasn't in those conversations, so that's why I chimed in. So that's what the plan will be. You know, we're trying to, again, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces, right? So one of them is the price, you know, the price for the program. So we just need that in place, that if we can get this, all those moving pieces to align and get that we're ready.
Breakfast, that we have lunch, there'll be snacks, it's just, and I'm saying is, how much of that is, I know that they don't know what they're doing free next year, but that, if they do free meals, that would count towards pre-K also, I believe?
I think it would, yes. I think that they actually come through the.
It's got to, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And they're moving towards free lunch again next year.
Yeah, it's not, for sure, yeah, it's out there.
It seems to be trending in that direction.
It is trending. Massachusetts is trending in that direction. I would agree with that, and hopefully, we know in the very near future.
So this is next school year?
So this is, we're still investigating, but in order to, for us to kind of move forward with what that structure may look like, if we can pull it off, we would need a tuition.
Will we ask for a preschool teacher in the operating budget for next year in addition?
We already have one in the, so that third, that third is already there.
What, so what is that impact on the tuition total? Is there an impact? Would we take in more tuition, would we take more full-time students, or any full-time?
Well, if you take a full-day students, you would obviously take in more tuition.
But we have less slots then, though.
No, you would have, you would actually probably have more slots, yeah.
Because we have another preschool.
The way we would have to look at it is.
Was it through the tuition?
No, we would.
It's offset.
It might be offset. I don't know if they cover a full position.
Right, so where's that full position?
If we were to do this, we would probably have to reorganize. Right now, we have a bubble teacher that's been following the largest grade level, and so we'd have to look at how that might look down the road if you were to go full day.
So we're not operating this next year? We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
But if we do, we're going to use that bubble teacher?
Correct. You already have, in the operational budget request, we have the third teacher. If we were to go to full day, we'd have to look at reorganizing and possibly using the bubble teacher.
Because we would need their classroom, too. The bubble teacher is in. I know they float.
Right.
What, what we really know is that all of our students have been impacted by this pandemic, but as you can imagine, our youngest students really need that support. And to get them into the classroom and start working with them to try to help them move forward, it's becoming very, very clear to us. So that's why we wanted to make sure we have this voted, and if we can get this in place, we are going to do our best to get it in place.
It's not going to be an additional FTE?
Not, not one that we asked for, no. Everything we've asked for is in that budget development.
Look at the FTEs from 2015 and last operating budget and this one. Is there a way to get that number?
Yeah.
Next. It involves funded by operating budget and grant.
You want 2015?
2015, 27, 2021, and 2022. Please. Is that a dual rule? Easy enough.
Yeah, just, it takes me a little time. I mean, you know, I just want to remind you that we did, used to have, I'm trying to remember what the total, was it like 11 FTE bus drivers? Do you remember? We don't have any of those bus driver FTEs. So I know we talk about the fact that, you know, we have lost positions, and yes, we have had to bring some back in for duration of need for a myriad of reasons, but we are still down a lot, and I just wanted to remind you.
I can see that, yeah. No, no, I agree with it. I hope so. Well, I bet we're not down that many, though. I don't know, I guess we can just look, yeah.
I, I think that those 11 bus drivers, and it was more than 11, it was like 18 or 20. But they didn't work full-time, so that's why I always try to do an FTE, the full-time equivalency. But yes, they all did qualify, most of them, for the benefits. I know that that's, you know, you're always concerned about that, rightfully so. I understand your concern. Greg, I will do my best to get you this information.
Whatever you can get, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So currently we have two pre-K teachers.
Yes.
And so we're going to be doing three pre-K teachers. One will have.
That's if we stay with the half-day model, right? Five-day-a-week. We're going to go five days a week.
And will the full-time kids, the full-day kids be in one classroom and the other students?
So we don't, right now, we're just investigating the full day, so we're still putting that together.
And we'll be able to do without that bubble teacher?
Oh, for the.
You know, it's something that we have to look at. That's why we're, nothing's set in stone in terms of the full day.
But we'll go.
We're looking at all that. That's why right now, we're not committing to necessarily the full day, but if we were to continue to go this direction, we would need the tuition.
My concern with moving, I think it's great you've got the bubble teacher and I feel like it's the second and the first graders and even the current kindergartens who are probably the most impacted by COVID, more than even the pre-K, because they're coming in kind of fresh and new with the way things used to be. And I guess my biggest concern moving through is if you really need that teacher for those first and second graders next year, you know, just think about that in terms of classroom size, because those are the ones that, like I said, the second grader I have this year, they couldn't even cut, this is how they cut out their hand.
Right, so this is all within the discussions and will continue to be in discussions, but in order for us to even continue the discussion, yeah, we would need to know, is a tuition possible?
So are you looking to increase it 2,000 to 20,000?
This would be for the full day if we can.
So we go to 6,000.
Right.
Okay, so I move that we establish a tuition of $6,000 for a full-day session, for a full-day pre-K program in the future as developed by.
As developed.
As developed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion, it's not.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. The motion's not just like dumb.
Because the full day actually entails, it's longer and it's going to entail more services. So this was the recommendation coming from Interlocking, based on preschools that they looked at.
And are preschool typically in all districts, you have to pay for them?
So it's your peers that are coming in, that are not on, coming out of early intervention that are paying for the preschool? Students that qualify for the early intervention and the special education.
And eight or peer and seven or, I think that might be the number, are high P students. Yeah, so that's why it's so beneficial, right? They're learning from each other and.
No, I just didn't know if pre-K was included in other public education. It's on the district.
Depends, yeah. The districts that we looked at were similar, a little bit more similar to us, this is, these are the sort of the range of prices and tuitions that they're working with.
We found that hours for the half-day was actually lower, under, it would just be 1,800, you guys have voted too.
I just feel like it's a lot. I think it depends when you look at private daycare or.
Which is crazy, yeah.
I know, which I'm sure. But I just feel like it's public school. And so I. I think the line is that it's not, no, but it says it's not compensatory, so it's not required for you to attend public school at this point, at this age. So that's why I think there's been latitude given to districts to offset tuition because it's not required for, all right, 2019.
And that's how it was kindergarten.
Yeah, we started kindergarten.
When our kids were kindergartners, were the first year they offered full day. It was $2,600, I think, for them to be a full day instead of half-day.
Right.
I had twins, they went half-day.
Yeah, my daughter went full day. No, we saw, we saw the benefit. There was a great, there was a great benefit to it. The full day, yeah.
Yeah, so. And we were able to maintain that building, hire the teachers, it was all, it was well-done.
Well, it paid, the tuition existed until the bond was paid off for the additions that were put on in Meadowbrook to house the programs. So it all worked.
And Antonella, we work with families, usually we set up like a monthly payment plan with them, so like currently, $1,800, they pay $180 for the 10 months and we kind of collect it that way. Somebody can always pay upfront. We usually give a slight discount to try to encourage the families. But we are looking at investigating the whole team that's working on this is, you know, some might be a half-day, some students and some might be a full day, depending on the needs, I think, of the students. So, but again, nothing set in stone, these are all just conversations and trying to look at the bigger picture.
Motion was made by Beth.
I second.
And then it was second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay, and that motion carries five to zero.
Good luck doing that, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
Foundation Reserve State Grant.
Yeah, so in your packet, you'll see a document that says, the following is joint guidance issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Division of Local Services Bureau of Appeals regarding FY22 one-time assistance for districts with pandemic-related enrollment disruptions impacting Chapter 78. So this was notification that I just received. I got the notification Wednesday, the next day the funds were here and I was told to set this up as a state grant. It is in the amount of $139,073. The FY22 Grant Appropriation Act provided funding for districts with pandemic-related disruptions in their enrollment that impacted their Chapter 78 for FY22. This is due to our enrollment declines from FY21 to 22, followed by significant enrollment increases from 22 to 23. There are no restrictions on how these one-time funds can be used to support school district appropriations and these funds can be carried into FY23. So I just need your official approval to accept the grant, if we can get that set up.
73 or 135.
139, that is correct. You can go ahead and say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move to approve the.
It's called the Foundation Reserve State Grant in the amount of $139,072.75.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella.